Good morning, council. The meeting is called to order at nine AM. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty VI and Treaty VIII traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. Could I have a motion of a member of council to adopt agenda? Counselor Cromwell? Offer the motion? Opposed? Nine and O. Thank you. We'll move to election of Reeve and Deputy Reeve. I'll outline the process. CAO will conduct the election for Reeve. The CAO will call for nominations three times for position of Reeve. A motion will be required for nominations to cease. Where there is more than one nomination for Reeve, voting shall be done by secret ballot if requested by any counselor. A secret ballot is not required. However, if it's requested by a counselor, we must must move to secret ballot. Ballots will be counted by two members of administration. The CAO will announce the person elected as Reeve. If voting by show of hands. If voting by secret ballot, a resolution of council confirming the vote is required per the MGA. If on the first ballot, no one counselor receives a clear majority of the votes. For example, we could have more than two persons nominated, so we could have three. The counselor who received the least number of votes shall be dropped from the ballot and second ballot shall be taken. On subsequent ballots, a counselor receives the least number of ballots shall be dropped from the ballot until a counselor receives a clear majority. After declaration of the Reeve, the chair will be turned over to the Reeve. I'll make my first call for nominations for Reeve of Athabasca County. Let's see, Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you. Good morning. I'm very pleased with how hard this county has been working and making sure that we make Athabasca County great again for both the ratepayers and the residents. And with that in mind, I would like to nominate Counselor Tracy Holland as Reeve.
We have a second call for nominations for Reeve. Let's see, Counselor Hall?
I'd like to nominate current Deputy Reeve. Counselor Anderson is Reeve. Counselor Anderson is respected by our neighbors, regional partners, and leaders across Alberta. Is witnessed a skillful ability to chair meetings and keep focused, and I've also witnessed her build relationships among our government municipal leaders and business in the region, and I think she has the right ability to lead us forward in a positive and productive manner.
Thank you. Third and final call for nominations for position of Reeve. Could I have a motion from somebody that nominations will cease? Capitania? All for the motion? Nine for. Those opposed? None. Thank you. We'll distribute the ballots for for election for Reeve.
I will just read out the results. Anderson. Holland. 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 Anderson. Holland. Anderson. Holland. If you want to read the result.
Just excuse me, but am I? Is my math wrong?
Let's read them again. Holland. 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 Oh, I know why. There's one on the bottom there. Sorry. Anderson.
Right. Five and four. As per the MGA council, could I get a a motion from someone confirming the vote? Could be Cromwell? All for that motion? Sorry, one, two, three, four. Please keep your hands up. That's nine, four, and no opposed. Thank you. Reeve Holland, you're you're elected as Reeve. We'll just have to do a vote of office.
Very much.
Good morning, everyone. First and foremost, I would like to extend my gratitude to Counselor Hall for his dedication, determination, and grit in his role as Reeve. Your tireless efforts are commendable. And I would also like to thank Counselor Cromwell for the Reeve nomination and my colleagues for your confidence in me to take on this role. And for your patience as I learn it, I'm truly honored, and I look forward to continuing our work. With that said, let's get to it, and we are at 3.3 of your agenda. Nomination, election of Deputy Reeve. Are there any nominations? Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you. Good morning. I would actually like to nominate Counselor Rob Minns for the position of Deputy Reeve.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations, Counselor? Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Thank you. Counselor Gerlock moves to cease nominations. And with that, we will go with secret ballot. No? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that. As like I said, we're learning. We're calling for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Eight and one. And this is where I'm assuming we go into secret ballot, and we do a motion for secret ballot? No? Not with Deputy?
Madam Chair, under the Act, it's kind of a quirk. The deputy elected, chief elected official is not listed as a position you can have a secret ballot for.
Oh, I see. So we're
It's pretty strange. It's in the package. It refers to the chief elected official and committee appointments can be dealt with by secret ballot. One would assume it would apply to Deputy Reed, but it does not.
Okay, so we will call for a vote for each nomination. Is that accurate? Okay, so if we could please call for a vote for nomination of Deputy Reeve for Counselor Minns, please. And that is five. Opposed? I'm sorry. Thank you. Therefore, we will congratulate Counselor Minns as now Deputy Reeve. And then we will do the swearing, swearing in. Thank you.
I love Minns. So I'll only affirm that I will diligently, faithfully, and best of my ability execute according to the law of the Office of Deputy Reeve for Athabasca County.
Town of Athabasca in the province of Alberta, the 31st day of October, 2024.
Do we require a motion to accept swearing in, or we're good?
No motion to accept that.
Thank you very much. So we will move to the next item in our agenda, which is 4.1. Council roles and responsibility. This is, these documents are best practice in an organizational meeting to do a review of. Is there any discussion? Okay, is there a motion to receive as information? Counselor Min? All those in favor? Any opposed? Nine and O. And we will move to 4.2, pecuniary interest for counselors. Any discussion? Motion to receive. Counselor Chamzick? All those in favor? And opposed? Nine and O. 4.3, Council Code of Conduct Bylaw 016-2023. Any discussion? Motion to receive for information? Counselor Chamzick, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Nine and O. 4.4, procedural bylaw 017-2023. Any discussion? Motion to receive. Counselor Cromwell, all those in favor? Unopposed? Nine and O. Thank you. 4.5, Elected Officials Remuneration and Expenses Policy 2009. A revised policy will take effect December 1st, 2024. Is there any discussion? All those, pardon me, a motion to receive as information? Counselor Gerlock, all those in favor? Unopposed? Nine and O. And 4.6, Respect in the Workplace Policy 4670. Any discussion? Motion to receive? Counselor Cromwell, 4.6 is complete as all in favor? Any opposed? Nine and O. Thank you very much. New Business, 5.1, page 58 to 65 of your agenda. Appointment of Third-Party Administrator Whistleblower Policy 4675. The recommendation that council approves Expera HR Services as a third-party administrator to the whistleblower policy. Would anyone in like to? Counselor Cromwell? Thank you. As recommended? Yes. All those in favor. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Nine and O. That motion carries. Next item, page 66 of your agenda, Appointment of Chair and Vice Chair of the Agriculture Services Board. Recommendation is to appoint a Chair and Vice Chair for the Agriculture Services Board. Do we have Counselor Gerlock? Counselor Chamzick? Has been nominated as Chair. Are there any other appointments? All those in favor? And opposed? Thank you. Nine and zero. And we also have an appointment for Vice Chair. Is there an emotion? Counselor Chamzick?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Gerlock, please. Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other appointment nominations? Alrighty, thank you, Counselor Chamzick. And we would put a motion to accept Counselor Gerlock as Vice Chair for ASB. All those in favor? And opposed? Nine and O. Thank you very much. 5.3, Budget and Finance Policy and Review Committee, page 67, please. The recommendation that council rescinds Policy 8105 Budget and Finance Committee and Policy 8120 Policy Review Committee. Is there a motion, Counselor Minns? As recommended? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Nine and O. Thank you. 5.4, page 70 of your agenda. Recommendation to appoint to three elected officials to the Athabasca County and Village of Boyle Intermunicipal Committee. So we can is there a motion to start with the appointments? Not a motion to start, but is there appointments that we would like to add to the motion? Counselor Chamzick?
I'd like to nominate Ashton and Natasha Capitanic, please.
Okay. Do we have a, an alternate that you would like to put forward as well? Or is that someone else? Okay. Do we have, do we have anyone else who would like to put in an alternate? Would you, you would like to suggest an alternate?
I would be willing to serve if no one else is
Okay.
jumping at the bit.
Okay. All right, if we have no further discussion or appointments, we can vote on the motion for the three elected officials to be Counselor Ashton, Counselor Capitanic, with the alternate as Counselor Hall to the Athabasca County and Village of Boyle Intermunicipal Committee. Thank you, pardon me. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Nine and O. Thank you. Page 79? In our agenda, which is 5.5, Alberta Community Crime Prevention Association. Recommendation that council determines if they want to renew membership with the Alberta Community Crime Prevention Association. Is there any discussion or motion?
I'd move that council discontinue our membership in the Community Crime Prevention Association.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you. I believe that we can all see in the news, real crime is on the rise, and I think that being a part of any board and group that can give tips and help with community safety is paramount to what we're doing here, and I would strongly vote against discontinuing that partnership.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, the motion is to discontinue the membership with the Alberta Community Crime Prevention Association. If I can call the vote. All those in favor? And opposed? Seven and two. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 5.6. The County Library Board, to appoint the current members for the County Library Board as follows, as written, Kelly Chamzick expiring October 2025, Gary Cromwell expiring 20, October 20th, 2025, Wanda Malot expiring October 20th, 2025, Kathy Hogarth expiring October 20th, 2025, Jennifer Oko expiring October 20th, 2025. Is there a motion? As recommended? Any discussion? We'll take you to the vote. Are all those in favor? And opposed? Nine and O. Thank you. 5.7. The council considers appointing counselors to each committee, commission, and our board. You know, we're kind of pinched for a little bit of time. And our, our information of our committee listing is on page 84 and 85 of your agenda. And in the interest of time, I'm wondering if we can similar to the consent agenda, pick out which committees we would like to see a change on and go from there, or would council prefer to go through each one?
I'd like to go through each one, please.
Okay. Well, we will begin. We've done the Agricultural Services Board. Pardon me? Pardon me. Thank you. I was thinking of a different board. We have four members to appoint to the Agricultural Services Board. Is there appointments? I'm sorry, is this a point where we would actually be considering secret ballot for each one of these, or is what, is this something that council would?
Madam Chair, that's ironically, it's permitted for committee appointments if you wanted to. If not, most places don't choose to do secret ballot for committee appointments, but that's at the will of council. It only is for the requirement of one member of council to request a secret ballot, and we must hold it.
Okay, thank you. Is that? Okay, Counselor Capitanic has requested secret ballot? Okay, so we require four seats for the Agricultural Services Board? So in the secret ballot situation, are we, thank you?
We have order. Nobody's been nominated yet, so why are we doing a ballot?
Well, she's handing them out. We've decided we're going to do secret ballot. So as I was saying, I'm trying to figure out through this, this procedure, and if we can start with nominations. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your help. Thank you. Counselor Gerlock? Thank you. And we're going to vote on each one separately. Is that accurate, or are we going to vote on all nominations in one? I'm, I'm just asking what the proper process is.
I think we'll just nominate different people, and if there's only four nominations, it'll
We'll just go for it.
It'll be smooth. I'd like to nominate Counselor Chamzick.
Thank you.
I'd like to nominate Minns, Wallack, Chamzick, and Gerlock.
Well, I kind of wondered. Thank you, Counselor.
I'd like to decline, please.
Counselor Wallack would like to decline the nomination? Do we have a fourth nomination?
I'd like to nominate Counselor Reeve Holland.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other nominations? No other nominations? So we will go forward and put the motion on the floor? Sorry? Nominate, do we need to vote to nominate to cease for every single one of these?
Can I make a procedural comment? Rubber's rules, and our rules do not require that. That's a common practice, but it's ridiculous. The point of nominations is to make sure that everybody who is, would like to be nominated has had a chance. So you call three times? You might call 27 times. It depends on the size of the body you're dealing with, and when there's nine counselors and you've asked a few times, and no one else is forthcoming? I think we're good, right? Like, you could call 10 times, but we'd only ever have the potential to get nine nominations. So really, once, once you're clear that, that anybody who would like to propose a nomination has had that opportunity, I think you're totally fine to not waste time voting on motions to cease nominations, because in its own way, a motion to cease nominations is actually anti-democratic and should be something we, we should avoid doing.
Okay.
So if, if you're, as a chair, happy that, satisfied at vast, no one's forthcoming, I think you're safe, in my opinion and reading of the rules, too.
So we can go forward with the nominee, or pardon me, we do not have, require a nomination, a cease of nomination motion, but we can go forward and accept the nominations for the Agricultural Services Board as Counselor Gerlock, Counselor Holland, Counselor Chamzick, and Counselor Minns. Everyone in favor? Any opposed? Nine and O. Thank you. The next committee would be the Alberta Hub?
Wasn't clear to us that anyone made a motion to that effect. What I would suggest you do is run through and try to populate as many of these as you can without a motion. And then one motion to accept the whole chart. If there seems to be a, a vote required to one or two, do it that way. Otherwise, one vote for the whole chart.
Okay.
That's my recommendation.
Okay. So we do not require a motion. We can go forward to the next one, correct? Thank you. All right, so the next item is Alberta Hub. Any nominations? Thank you.
I'll nominate Counselor Wallack.
Thank you. Any other nominations? All right, Counselor Wallack has been nominated to Alberta Hub. The next item is the LSB Donahue Library and Archive, Archives Board. This position is mentioned as a liaison. Do we have a discussion regarding liaison positions? Counselor Chamzick?
I would like to make the motion for liaison positions to be removed.
Okay, is that for all three liaison positions? Okay, the three liaison positions that we currently have are for the LSB Donahue Library, Community Education Committee for Northern Lakes, Northern Lakes College, and the Boyle Public Library.
Madam Chair, effective December 1st, under the new policy, they're no longer liaison, they're they're appointed.
Okay. So we do not need, we can withdraw that motion? Thank you. All right, do we have nominations for the LSB Donahue Library and Archives? Okay, thank you. I don't think we have any other nominations. Thanks, you. Thank you, Counselor Chamzick. The Alternative Land use services.
I'll let my name
I'll let my name stand.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Minns for Alice. The next is the Aspen View, Aspen Regional Water Services Commission, two plus an alternate. Councillor Chamzick?
I'd like to nominate Gary Cromwell, please.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hall?
Like to nominate councillor Minns.
Councillor Minns. So we have those three for those, for main positions? And an alternate?
Nominate councillor Walk.
Thank you. Being that we have three positions nominated. And councillor Wallack is nominated as alternate, correct? Okay, so would we now go to vote? For the Aspen Regional Water Services Commission? The first nomination was councillor Cromwell. All those in favor? I'm sorry?
I think you have to go to a secret ballot on this because you.
You're asking for a secret ballot on this one? Pardon me, thank you, Cash. So a lot, folks. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your help. Thank you so much. I'll just read them out. Minns, Cromwell. And alternate was Wallack. Minns Hall, alternate is Cromwell. Minns Cromwell, alternate is Wallack. Minns Hall, alternate is Wallack. Minns Cromwell, alternate is Wallack. Minns Hall, alternate is Wallack. Hall Cromwell, alternate is Wallack. Hall Minns, alternate is Wallack. Cromwell, Minns, and alternate is Wallack.
Madam Chair, and I invite scrutiny for, I'll report what I heard. Seven votes for Wallack as alternate. Seven votes for Minns as, as regular. Member, committee member. Uh, one vote for Cromwell as alternate and four votes as member. And five votes for Hall as member.
Thank you. Do we require a motion?
I, I would say accept the results of the entire table when you get down to the bottom.
Thank you. Uh, the next item up is Athabasca Intermunicipal Development Plan Committee. There are three plus an alternate. If we can open our nominations, please. Thank you. Nominations or any others or?
I'll let my name stand.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just moving along, yeah.
Okay, and we're happy with, um. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to stay on the committee and councillor Holland, you as well? Yes, thank you. Awesome. Uh, the next item is Athabasca Landing Trail Steering Committee. Do we have any changes there? I would like to stay as on if that's okay. And do we have any other councillor? Okay, thank you. That's, that's great. Thank you. Are there any other?
Just, Madam Chair, can I just remind members, please use the microphone whenever we're speaking.
Thank you. I'll get there. All those different things. Thank you so much. Um, Athabasca Landing Trail Steering Committee will just switch the alternate and councillor Chamzick and councillor Grot. The next item is Athabasca Regional Multiplex Society, three plus the alternate. We currently have councillor Capitanic, councillor Anderson and councillor Wallack with alternate as councillor Hall.
I would like to let my name stand and I would like to also nominate councillor Anderson and councillor Wallack as members and councillor Hall as alternate.
Okay. Thank you. And it looks like we have. The same slate for this one. Thank you very much. We'll move to Athabasca Regional Waste Management, please. Uh, two plus an alternate. Currently, we have councillor Hall, councillor Minns with alternate councillor Cromwell.
I'd like to nominate councillor Cromwell. To the main seat and decline the main seat.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to discuss alternate for? As, as I'm assuming councillor Minns, you're, you would. Like to stay?
You betcha.
Okay.
Alternate, I'd like to, uh. Put on councillor Hall.
Okay.
Would you be up for that? Okay.
Okay. I don't think there's any further discussion, so we'll just switch those two councillor Hall as alternate and Gary as. Member. Next item will be the Athabasca Watershed Council.
I could let my name stand if.
Okay. Thank you, alternate councillor Pomel. Thank you. No other discussion. Okay, next item will be the Blue Heron Vocational Training. We have councillor Gerlock, uh, and alternate as councillor Hall. Any changes there?
I would like to remain on that.
Thank you.
I'd be certainly open to someone else taking the alternate role. Councillor Gerlick has never asked me anyway, so I don't know if it's. I'll decline the alternate.
You'll decline the alternate? Is there anyone who would like to nominate for alternate?
I'll go and use alternate.
You would like alternate councillor Chamzick, thank you so much. The next item is Boyle Area Intermunicipal Development Planning Committee. Currently, we have councillor, uh, Capitanic as alternate. Uh, councillor Anderson and councillor Chamzick as members. On the committee, is there any? It's a different one, yeah. Yes. Are there any changes for this one? Looking good. Thank you so much. The next item is the Boyle Public Library Board. We have councillor Chamzick as member. Any changes here? You would like to stay? Thank you. Uh, we do not need to discuss the Budget and Finance Committee. That can be struck. The next item would be the Community Education Committee, Northern Lakes College. We have councillor Cromwell as a member. Any changes? Okay, that looks good. The next item, Community Futures. We have councillor Capitanic as well as councillor Chamzick as alternate.
I would like to resign from this committee.
You would like to resign? Do we have a nomination for member for Community Futures?
I nominate councillor Cromwell.
Councillor Cromwell. Thank you. Any other nominations? Okay. Councillor Cromwell and alternate councillor Chamzick, would you like? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Community Transportation, we have one in alternate. I'm happy to stay. Uh, with alternate, uh, Chamzick, is there any? Changes? Okay, everything's good there. County Library Board, uh, two members. We have councillor Cromwell, councillor Chamzick. Any change? Sorry?
Madam Chair, you actually did it earlier in the meeting when you appointed.
We did that one, yes. Thank you very much. Family and Community Support Services, two plus alternate. We have councillor Gerlock, councillor Chamzick and myself as alternate. Any changes for this one? Looking good. Thank you. Uh, Farm Women's Conference and Awards Planning Committee, one plus alternate. We have councillor Wallack and councillor Chams, or pardon me councillor Anderson as, um, alternate. Any changes?
I'd like to resign, please.
Okay. Councillor Wallack, just got to find you here. Do we have a nomination for a member?
I would like to nominate councillor Chamzick.
You worked at that. Thank you so much. Uh, councillor Chamzick. Let me just double check here to where the alternate was. Councillor Anderson, would you like to remain?
I'll decline the nomination.
Alright, and we can have an alternate for, uh, farm women's, please?
Like to nominate Tracy.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I will accept. So Farm Women's Conference now, we have councillor Chamzick as member. And councillor, uh, pardon me. Holland, myself as alternate. Uh, Greater North Foundation, we have councillor Hall. One member. Is there any change? Okay, you'd like to stay. Thank you. Any other? Uh, Island Lake Waterline Advisory Committee, two members. We currently have councillor Hall and councillor Minns. Councillor Minns?
I was just gonna, uh, mention, I don't know if, if. If, uh, we need to have. Have the Reeve on there or. And plus one, or just due to the fact that. There is a bunch of mayors and reeves, or mayors anyway. Also, in the advisory council, I don't know how. Everybody felt about that. If we wanna keep the Reeve in there or do we wanna change the other person to just a councillor?
Would you like to do nomination or would we as council?
Yeah, yeah, but when, when it first came through, it was like. Well, we should have the Reeve on there. As a, as a, uh, person now on, on the committee, so. But. Were you better to leave it with your water commission members?
How would you like to, would you like to do any nominations?
Well, we can leave it as water commission members if, if, if council wants to do that. Whichever. I was just bringing it up because. That was the discussion when we had this, uh, when we had this. Discussion before was the two members were put on there, one went on there as because the Reeve.
Okay.
So.
Okay, councillor Capitanic?
Um, it's my understanding the Reeve is a member of every committee, so they can attend any meeting at any time. Still, and still have members.
Councillor Gerlock?
Just wanted to echo, but councillor Capitanic, I think it should remain status quo.
Okay.
We're, we're in the middle of stuff.
Okay.
I'm willing to let my name stand and hopefully councillor Hall is too.
Okay, is that good with you councillor Hall? Okay, thank you. Alright. We go on now for the Municipal Planning Commission. I believe we are all, uh, still members of that commission. Do we? We don't do chair and vice at this time, do we? No, okay.
No, madam chair. That's at the meeting.
Alright.
Since it doesn't require, it requires seven members, I would like to, uh, resign from this committee.
Uh, let's see. Councillor Capitanic would like to resign. Which will leave eight unless anyone else has. Any changes they would like to make? Alright, we will have eight members on the MPC. The next item is, uh, well, it would be the Reeve, so I'm pretty sure we don't need to go through that one. The Northeast Alberta Alliance for Growth and Opportunity, also for Reeve. So the next item is Northern Lights Library Board. We currently have councillor Chamzick.
I'd like to leave my name stand.
Okay, thank you. I'm satisfied with everybody. Other nominations will move forward. Policy Review Committee is not necessary. The Regional Advisory Committee is Reeve plus one. We currently have, um, councillor, where are we? Anderson, um, as the, uh, plus one. Councillor Cromwell?
Like to nominate Deputy Reed Minns.
Okay, councillor Anderson? I'm sorry. Declining the nomination. Councillor Minns. Alright, anyone, any other nominations? We're good with the Reeve plus one? Alright. Councillor Minns, thank you. The next item is the Regional Healthcare Recruitment and Retention Committee, which is one plus the alternate. Uh, currently, we have councillor Wallack and myself as the alternate. Uh, I would like to, um. Decline the alternate. Councillor Wallack, would you like to main, remain?
No, I'd like to resign, please.
She'd like to resign. So we have two, I, two, uh, nominations required, one for member, one for alternate.
I'll go down as the alternate.
Okay, councillor Minns, thank you. And anyone would like to take the, um, member seat?
Somebody?
Well, I'd like to nominate councillor Cromwell. Okay, are we good with that councillor Pomel? Alright. Councillor Cromwell and councillor Minns. The next item is the Reg- Regional Waterline Feasibility Study Steering Committee. Uh, we currently have councillor.
Yeah, that's the one I was, uh, I was just gonna say, let's remove that one, please.
Okay, it's time to delete that one.
Steering committee is, is. We, we, we've moved on.
Thank you for that. So the next item is the Summer Village of Baptiste Lake Intermunicipal Development Planning Committee. Currently, we have councillor Minns. Okay, any other? Okay, sounds good. We'll leave that one. Summer Village of Bondas Intermunicipal Development Planning Committee, uh, councillor Anderson.
I'll decline.
She would like to decline. Do we have a nomination?
Nominate councillor Capitanic?
And she would like to decline. I'll go ahead. I'll, I can put my name forward for that. That's fine. Nope, that's fine. Is there anyone else? We're good? Alrighty, the Summer Village of Island Lake Intermunicipal Development Planning Committee. We have councillor Minns. He's good to go. And then us, last one is Water North Coalition. One plus the alternate. We have councillor Cromwell with alternate Minns.
I'll do the alternative. Councillor Cromwell will do the.
Alright. Status quo. And I believe. That takes us to the end of our committees if I'm not mistaken. Which would then require a motion as amended? Or how would you like to?
Madam Chair, just one motion to accept the, uh, all committee listings as, as discussed.
As discussed, thank you.
And as discussed and voted. Let's make it two different things because there was one vote.
Okay. Motion.
Perhaps I missed it in my haste to jot everything down. Did we end up voting on the ASB members? Because they were more nominated than the receipts available. Because they were more nominated than the receipts available.
No.
Four nominations and four seats equals four.
Okay.
Madam Chair, my notes.
Glad we can count. Thank you.
I think we had Gerlock, Holland, Chamsik, Mins, I said, yep, yeah, okay.
All right, any further discussion? On the.
I'll move the motion.
Thank you very much. Does anybody need a motion read again? We're good. All those in favor? Posed, nine and O. Thank you. Five point eight is our uh county council meeting dates. Um, is this a motion to receive? Councillor Hall?
It's a motion to approve is, is what you're probably seeking.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I'm sorry, he made the motion. I under- I'm sorry, I understood what you had said was the motion to accept the dates. He would like to approve the dates as the motion would state. All those in favor? Any opposed? Nine and O. And other business is the destruction of the ballots.
I'll make a motion to approve the destruction of ballots.
Um, in favor? And opposed, nine and O. And I guess we do adjourn this meeting at, I don't even have my pot handy, nine fifty-one. Yes, please. Um, ten minute recess. Thank you so much. I would like to call the regular county council uh Thursday, October thirty-first, meeting to order at nine fifty-nine AM. Well, we'll, we'll make it ten AM, make it easier. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty Six and Treaty Eight Traditional Territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Nettie and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language and culture. Before we begin, um, I have a few words. Uh, we. Uh, it is with heartfelt sadness to share that former Reeve and councillor, Mr Berkeley Ferguson, has passed away. Athabasca County flags are at half mast as we mourn this immense loss in our community. Mr Ferguson served as councillor and school board trustee from nineteen seventy-one to nineteen seventy-seven. And continued his service as councillor in nineteen eighty-six through nineteen ninety, when he was elected Reeve, a position he held until nineteen ninety-eight. Mr Ferguson's last term on council was nineteen ninety-eight through two thousand and one. We are thankful for his service. And our thoughts are with the Ferguson family during, during this difficult time. If I can turn our attention to the consent agenda. The items that must be selected and discussed are two point one, four point one, five point one, six point one, eight point two. Twelve point one, twelve point two, twelve point three and twelve point four. Are there any other? Items, councillor Cromwell?
Thank you very much. Uh, in regards to five point one, page fifteen of your agenda. This is a recommendation from committee. To bring this here, and I would actually believe this would be done enclosed and like to have that moved to twelve point five.
Is there any objection?
There's been so much of that done in open. There's no reason to move that to closed unless there's something to hide. Let's do it in open and get it done. So I'd like to split the question on that move. And we also had, I can't remember if I heard you say three point two, but that also should be on the agenda.
Did you say two point two, three point two? You. Two. So with regards to the request to move enclosed for item five point one, we will take that to vote? What section of the FOIP Act it would fall under if it is voted to move to close? Councillor Cromwell?
We've got B twenty-four one uh advice from officials personnel, I'm assuming.
I, do you have an agree with that? Objection, Reeve Hall? Yeah.
Uh, as far as I'm concerned, this should stay open. The committee, the major- was sent here by majority vote to discuss in open. And it is just like, it's appalling that we can't have a conversation about this in open session. Let's, let's have a conversation and get this, this festering issue dealt with.
I will ask the CAO for advice with regards to the FOIP um section twenty-four point one. Is that something that is? Accurate for us to put as.
Without, Madam Chair, without knowing exactly what the discussion would be, um, I would take it on good faith that the section that the mover. Cause we still need a motion um is, is uh referencing is correct.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Gerlock?
Can I just call a question?
Yes. So the question would be to move five point one to twelve point, pardon me, twelve point five? In them.
And just make sure, do we just have a motion to that effect, Madam Chair?
Would you like the motion to? Thank you, by councillor Cromwell. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, that was five, four. Pardon me, all those opposed? One, two, three, four. Opposed? Thank you. That item will remain in open. So any other items on the consent agenda? That anyone else?
I'd like to discuss seven point seven.
Seven point seven? Any others?
I'm not sure if there was a multiplex update or not. I just had a note to.
No multiplex update? All right. So we'll just run through this one more time.
And also could it also add seven point four?
Seven point four. Okay, any others? Alrighty, so the items that we will be discussing, two point one, four point one. Pardon me, I was getting to three point two at the end. Thank you. Two point one, three point two, four point one, five point one, six point one, eight point two, twelve point one. Or pardon me, I skipped seven point four and seven point seven, pardon me, between six point one and eight point two, twelve point one, twelve point two, six point three and twelve point four. We have a motion to accept the agenda. Councillor Cromwell? All those in favor? Any opposed? I don't know. You. Item three point two. Page ten to fourteen. Yeah, it was done. Councillor Hall?
There's a correction on the bullet point under resolution twenty-four dash four seven three. It should read and form part of Athabasca County assessment role, not formed.
Any other discussion? We can have a motion to uh receive the special county council meeting minutes as amended. Councillor Mins? All those in favor? Opposed? Nine and O, thank you. Our delegation is not due until eleven AM, so if we can move to item five point one. On page fifteen to twenty-one of your agenda. For council discussion.
I'd like to make a motion or I move that Athabasca, the administration be directed. To release investigative report regarding the May tenth code of conduct complaint by Aspenview Public Schools and all related correspondence. From Aspenview to and from the county beginning February twenty-seven, sorry, February twelfth, twenty-four to present. Subject to the necessary redactions in consultation with the FOIP officer.
Um, thank you for the motion. However, I believe according to our. Uh, code of conduct by law seventeen G, all proceedings regarding the investigation shall remain or shall be confidential. Um, it would be the will of council, however, our code of conduct says otherwise. Hey, is there any discussion with regards to that motion?
I, I will add a comment. I find it curious that, you know, council hasn't released these documents to the public. After all, my name was made public, which contradicts our historic practice where we have never before named a councillor where there has been no breach of the code. Council proposed to sanction even without a breach, and folks, this is new territory and I'm at a loss regarding the motivation behind the handling of this matter. So why not release these to the public? I personally, as a subject of the complaint, have no objections. And our residents deserve to know what all the fuss has been about. You know, this might have been titled much ado about nothing, but I think that name's already taken. In any case, releasing the report in the layers will shed light on the basis for which council decided to pursue this matter. And the reasons that Aspenview felt a complaint was an appropriate way to deal with a short and respectful phone call from a parent.
Okay. Councillor Captain Tannock?
I second that uh sentiment and I really believe that um if the public has spent money on something and the, the. Person, I guess that is the topic of the investment in hiring investigator. Uh, that the public should get to see what their money paid for.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alright. I, I do actually have a few words. In, in my opinion, the decision committee have been sensitive and respectful of all parties directly and indirectly impacted by this Code of Conduct as we work through difficult circumstances. The decision committee made their decision in good faith following the council Code of Conduct bylaw in closed session as the motion indicates. The accusation that council violated a number of provisions of the Code of Conduct when passing resolution C C two four dash three two nine is inappropriate and unfounded. Three point one B of our Code of Conduct bylaw states, "When representing the municipality, members shall at all times perform their functions and duties in a conscientious and diligent manner with integrity, accountability, and transparency." In that light, regarding C C two four three two nine, I would expect that the motion that was issued would be respected, and personally, I would prefer to see that that particular resolution be carried out as requested. Therefore, I would be opposed to the current motion as recommended by Councillor Hall. And I would also caution that, again, we have a Code of Conduct bylaw that requests those items remain confidential. So in a motion to, and again, I'm not sure if administration caught all of the wording on that particular motion that Reeve Hall mentioned, and if not, we could be asked, it'd be read again.
Madam Chair, I think we've got the intent, but if Reeve Hall would mind repeating it again, then we'll get it for word for word.
Thank you.
I have it written, and I can provide you it on paper, I can give you this piece of proof.
The intent, I understood, to release the investigator's report and all correspondence received from Aspen View related to the matter. That's the intent, we'll capture the wording once we've, we've received this wording and reviewed the recording.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the intended motion? Okay, recorded vote has been called. If we would like, Councillor Minns?
If, if we release this, this information to the paper or to the, to open, and the paper's here, so that's why that came out. We release that, all it's gonna do is just keep this going. Right? It's just gonna, it's just gonna fire everything up again and, and for what reason I don't understand, other than, other than for a person to accept that maybe they did something wrong. If a person would just stand up and just say, hey, I'm sorry. I think this should end right now, I think it would just go away, but I, I wish it would go away. Like, done with it, just say, okay, hey, maybe a main mistake, sorry, let's move on. It's all, it's all that needs to happen here. Instead of releasing a bunch of information that he said, she said stuff and all this other stuff. I'm just, I'm just tired of it.
Councillor, uh, Wallack?
Uh, we've had many opportunities to close this, but council decided against it. So I think the public should know what we're spending our money on and why council's going this direction.
Okay, Councillor Capitania?
I just wanted to, to point out that it's not a he said, she said, it is a report done by a third party investigator, and it is correspondence between the county and Aspen View, so it's all in writing, it's not a he said, he said, she said situation.
Thank you, Councillor Cromwell.
Thank you, I would like to remind all of our peers at the table that though we get advice from an investigator or third party, we have not always followed that advice when we believe it is incorrect, or there is something that may have been overlooked, and we have released information without the support of third party investigator before, much to the opposite of what Councillor Hall said. I believe we have to be very careful, we have a process that needs to be followed, and what happened enclosed cannot be leaked out, has it already has been far too much, but things need to be kept properly and follow our procedures and our bylaws, and I will absolutely vote against the current motion.
Thank you. Councillor Gerla?
Yeah, I think I think that it needs to be discussed fully and, and put out there. It's, uh, it'll be a whole discussion about the unnecessary, just about everything about this was unnecessary and avoidable, and that's where the concern is, is, is dragging us through something that was unnecessary and avoidable. And I think that should see the light of day. It, it, it should come out and be discussed and then put to bed.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'm sorry?
I will close as a mover, if you are ready.
Absolutely, anybody else? Okay, thank you, go ahead, Reeve Hall.
I, I'd like to, you know, remind us all, and given the unprecedented release of my name by council after the investigator found no breaches, and the ambiguity around the motion for releasing my name, I think it's important we provide the documents available to council to our residents. I agree that we have had opportunities to shut this down, and we have elected to continue to try to stretch it out. In any case, releasing the report will shed light on that basis that council engaged an investigator to generate a complaint from something that didn't even meet the minimum standard to begin with. You know, we pay lip service to transparency, transparency when it's convenient, but let's be transparent about the motivation to pursue this non-issue. Let's release this and share the reasons that Aspen View felt a complaint was an appropriate way to deal with a short and respectful conversation from a parent, and those are Aspen View's words, "short and respectful." Now, I've suspected that there can be bullying at the schoolyard, but I did not expect to feel it from the school board. And in my capacity as a parent, I asked two reasonable questions. So why does asking them make me the target of intimidation from members at this table and the school board? Tell me why it's unreasonable to seek clarification from a trustee that represents the area where I live regard regarding an important community meeting where I've been told that only two of seven trustees attended, and I thus asked my trustee to help me understand why she didn't attend when she represents part of the area affected. I also asked whether it was true that the school division asked the media not to come. Now, we've all read the investigation. The investigator has stated that the timing of the call represented an error in judgment.
Order, those items are enclosed, we're.
I, we're, the investigator has stated the timing of the call represented an error in judgment.
Point of order?
And on that, I agree wholeheartedly.
Point of order, please.
I'm saying that I agree, the timing of the call.
Reeve Hall, I'm asking you to cease, those items were discussed enclosed, we have not.
These are my words.
I'm, thank you for your words, however, I will say you have left the bylaw, I'm calling point of order and asking you to cease.
May I finish?
If, if you would like to discuss items that were not enclosed, thank you.
I have that.
Otherwise, we will go to vote.
I have an item that was not enclosed next. What went on where the decision committee left closed session with an agreeable motion, then rejected it to impose a sanction from the floor? Somehow, I doubt that was discussed enclosed. What could be the motivation of the mover and those voting in favor, especially after reading the report? I fully support releasing the report and the related communications, unless there's something to hide, I urge you to support that motion too.
Thank you. We will now go to vote on the intent tended motion, the motion that was to release this documents. I do not have it in full writing, but it will be passed along to administration. Thank you, that would be great.
The motion that I read was to administration be directed to release the investigator's report regarding the May tenth twenty twenty four Code of Conduct complaint by Aspen View Public Schools and all related correspondence from Aspen View to and from the county beginning February twelfth twenty twenty four to present, subject to the necessary redactions in consultation with the FOIP officer.
Thank you. We will now go to vote. All those, pardon me? It is, we caught the recorded aspect. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, and opposed? One, two, three, four, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, I should have warned you at the start of the meeting, we'll have some little ones in, in the building for Halloween. We hope that's okay with council, and it may drown us out for a very brief minute, so, sorry.
Thank you so much, I'm just seeing them coming in, and it's adorable, so thank you for allowing that to happen, that's amazing. Alrighty, if we can move on to the next item of our agenda, please, it's item six point one, page twenty two of your agenda. I will get there. Alright, so this is the land use bylaw amended by law.
The, the motion coming from was there not a motion, a recommendation from committee, the whole, to discuss C C twenty four three two nine regarding the whether it stays on the action list or not?
I believe the motion was recommend, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that motion was a recommendation. However, your motion that you gave is what I interpreted as trumping the recommendation. If council would like to back up to five point one and request that motion come forward, that it either stay or not stay on the action list, please do so. Councillor Wallack?
I'd like to make a motion to mark as completed on our action item list.
Thank you. Any discussion? Councillor Minns?
How can it be completed if, if, if it's still going, going on?
That's, that's the biggest thing, it's.
No, I believe that there's a separate motion resolution number that will be given for the current one that we have that just passed, and this would be a if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, but please correct me if I'm wrong. Okay? So the motion, I believe, that is being requested to be removed from the action list to C C two, sorry, I don't have that in front of me, two, 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 four, three, two nine? Is there any discussion? Thank you.
Um, as the motion clearly reads, it's a request to the public or for a public apology, made in closed discussion, so when the motion was made, how was Reeve Hall supposed to know it was enclosed? Secondly, it was a request, so the request was sent, and as that, the motion is done.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Councillor Cromwell?
You know, if we want to play on wording, I think the intent was very clear, and we would expect members at our table to, to go by, you know, the request of council, that is what we're here for, not to go rogue and decide what they deem as appropriate or not.
Thank you. I also have to agree, the wording in our bylaw, our council Code of Conduct uses the word request. So I have no problem with the wording of that particular motion. I would vote opposed, being that this motion, in my view, was not complete, so I would vote opposed. Any other discussion? Alright, if we would like to take that to question, all those in favor to consider motion two, four, three, is it two, four, three, two, nine? Complete and to be removed from the action list, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, all those opposed? One, two, three, four, five, motion fails. Alright, everybody comfortable for moving to six point one?
Would, it seems that this is an issue that is going to continue to fester, and so I'm not okay with it just sitting. If you would permit me the time, I will make a statement regarding that item.
Please go ahead.
So as it relates to motion C C twenty four three twenty nine, the only matter that should be for council should be the May tenth formal complaint by Aspen View. And at the outset, again, I must confirm in unequivocal terms that the phone call I made to the trustee from my electoral division on January twenty five twenty four was initiated in my personal capacity as a parent with children in the division's schools and resident of the trustee's electoral district. In my capacity as a parent, I asked two reasonable questions of my trustee, and again, I ask, why does asking them make me the target of intimidation and at this table and from the school board?
And please refrain from accusing.
Would it be on?
Excuse me.
Sorry, I'm telling you how I feel, and you cannot tell me how I feel.
Point of order, I, I can absolutely ask you not to be offensive to our governing bodies, so please refrain.
Tell me why it's unreasonable to seek clarification from my trustee that represents the area where I live, why she did not attend an important community meeting when she represents part of the area affected, and why is it unreasonable to ask whether it was true if the school division asked the media not to attend the meeting? Now, the board chair has stated the media were not prohibited from attending, but that's an evasion of the actual question, which was, were they asked not to come, and there is a big difference, so I accept. The trustee's feelings were sincere when she expressed them to the investigator regarding our conversation in January, and I regret and am sorry that a call described by all parties as short and respectful caused the trustee to feel intimidated. This impact on the trustee was clearly not my intention when, as a parent, I made a call to the trustee from my area. To quote the investigator, I find that Mr Hall did not intend to intimidate Ms Fulmore during the call, and that objectively, intimidation did not occur. Counsel is well aware of the letter of apology that I have already forwarded to Ms Fulmore on this matter. So what's our motivation to continue and prolong this?
Reeve Hall, I'm going to stop you now, as, as we mentioned, this will be coming back for discussion, and I highly recommend that you bring your conversation then. I afforded some time, however, in your conversation that you are presenting to council, I would like you to stop. We will continue with that when that comes back to council.
I'm really disappointed at the attempts to hide.
Point of order, Reeve Hall? We have asked you to.
This level of bullying at our table has to stop, folks. We have to move past this, and if we can't even talk about this, we have a serious and deep problem. And I'm sorry that we're at that spot, and I am embarrassed for all of us.
And thank you for that, as mentioned, and as the motion has passed, we will be discussing it. We will move on now, thank you, to item six. Bylaw zero two two dash two zero two four, pages twenty two to thirty of your agenda, the recommendation, is there a motion? Councillor Chamsick?
I'd like to move the recommended motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll take it to the vote, all those in favor? If you all opposed? Nine and oh, thank you. Item seven point four, Alpac Bridge, B S eight one one two nine, page eighty seven of your agenda, please. Your motion? Is recommended, the recommended, recommendation that council approve Bridge File eight one one two nine to be submitted for Strategic Transportation Infrastructure Program grant and to direct the Reeve to sign the letter and application package. I believe.
Yeah, the concern I had with that by applying for it for STIP, are we accepting responsibility for the bridge, or has it been the county responsibility? Because that's kind of still up in the air, whether that's a county responsibility or a provincial responsibility? Is there any concern there, or?
Madam Chair, I believe that that discussion can happen at the same time as we apply. I don't think that this dissolves our argument that maybe the province is a bigger partner in that bridge than we believe. In the last discussion that I had with the regional director, the advice was to apply under step, and there was no discussion about, which means that you're, you're agreeing that the bridge is one hundred percent yours. He understands that we would like to continue discussion. So there's risk, but right now, their position is, it is ours. So if we can get them to move back from that, that helps us, and, but we can walk and chew gum at the same time, we can fix the bridge, hopefully with their money, and still argue that it should be their bridge.
Yeah. And again, if, if we do, if we are successful in getting that grant, that means that we probably don't get grants for the other projects that we have that we want to have in the queue, so that was my only concern. So that was my only concern. Thank you.
Would you like to go ahead with the recommended motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? And opposed. Nine and O, thank you. Seven point seven is next, uh, one oh two of your agenda, please. The recommendation is to receive the letters of support to the Athabasca Agricultural Society and the Perry Vale Community Hall Association for Information. Is anybody like to pass to Counselor Cromwell and discussion, please, Counselor.
Yeah, again, the concern I had with that one. Is uh. It. Makes me a little nervous that the count, that, that the. Community assumes that they are responsible for the maintenance of the cemetery. Everything that they're assuming those responsibilities. Uh. Uh. Because. I don't think it should be such, I don't think any communities are, are responsible for maintenance of, of cemeteries that's. They're there to help where they can, but they're certainly not responsible for, for fulfilling those responsibilities.
I think there's multiple that we don't own, um, there's lots in my area that aren't owned by the county and they maintain them and. And they do extra work to them.
This one is owned by the county and. I don't think it's a problem, it's just. I don't think that they should be accepting. Responsibility for the maintenance.
Alright, so we have um. A recommendation, is anyone willing to? Put that motion forward? I'm sorry. Thank you, I appreciate that. I missed it when Counselor Gerlock was chatting. Telling us his, yeah, anyway, if we could please then for the, the motion that is recommended as per count, if Counselor Cromwell has moved. All those in favor. Opposed. Nine and O, thank you. It's ten thirty, would uh council like to take? Uh, seven, eight, nine minute recess, we'll do. Uh, what is this? Pardon me, would you want to do calendars? Okay. That's alright with everybody, calendars, eight point two, page one seventeen of your agenda, please. Let's get there and. For November, does anybody have any Counselor Chamsick?
Um, I was wondering if the, sorry. Can the November fourteenth meet, meeting be moved to Cal and can M P C be moved to the twenty-eighth for November?
Alrighty. Uh, I guess for administration, do they feel that we would be able to do both in the fourteenth um special council meeting on the nineteenth? Group, uh, in combination with committee of the whole.
Um, Madam Chair, we would love it, gives us a few more days to work on it. So, yeah, we're. Uh. You, you saved us.
Okay, that's great.
It makes conference easier.
Special counsel to what time?
So special council meeting from November fourteenth moved to November nineteenth. Um.
Immediately following uh conclusion of the Cal meeting or um the other thing, Madam Chair is. About, no, we could leave it as a special council meeting so that you could pass motions, so I'd recommend that you. Just uh have it worded as uh immediately following conclusion of Cal meeting.
Okay. Alright. Uh, do we make a separate motion for that being it's a special meeting outside of calendars? Or we can accept it with the calendar changes? Okay, thank you, so on moving uh the special council meeting from November fourteenth to be immediately after the committee of the whole meeting, November nineteenth. All those in favor? All those opposed? Eight and one.
May I continue?
Yes, please.
Um, for December the thirteenth, um, Northern Lights, the eighteenth A S B. And I'm going to ask if M P C be able to move to. The seventeenth, if possible.
Okay. Can I back up just one before? We also asked about uh the twenty-six M P C meeting moving to the twenty-eighth in November. So can we start there and then move forward? Yeah, if that's okay. Is, would that be, I don't know what the file uh is, would be like, that would be okay? Okay. I'm sorry. At nine or? Would nine AM be? A sufficient time before the meeting? That's common.
Could I recommend nine thirty and then we begin the county council meeting scheduled for? Ten fifteen, that way uh people that are traveling and those of the children aren't uh. Rushed in the morning.
Okay. Is that uh?
We not go such a long gap, like nine thirty and nine forty-five, you can start late, but you can't start early according, so let's. Keep them close and run it late if you have to.
I agree with that. Okay, so nine thirty uh for M P C, nine forty-five for regular council, everybody's happy with that? Okay, so we will move from the twenty-sixth, the M P C to the twenty-eighth. Alright, sorry, Counselor Chamsick, you mentioned the thirteenth was Northern Lights, I believe.
Yeah, A S B is the eighteenth.
Okay.
Um, and then wondering if we can move M P C a week earlier to. Uh, the Cal.
Being that's on Christmas Eve?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that work for you? Alright, okay, is that satisfactory for everyone else? And then, hang on, hang on, let's figure out a time, yeah, sorry. So the uh December twenty-fourth M P C meeting moved to December seventeenth, we just have to determine a time. Um. M P C at nine and, or nine thirty and then. Nine forty-five Cal? Does that work? Is that satisfactory for everyone? Okay. Awesome. December seventeenth, so nine. Move the, I'm sorry. Well, potentially just moving that entire day. The seventeenth altogether? Or sorry, uh. No, never mind, I'm looking at it this way, sorry. Forgive me, okay, alright. I took my turkey on the twenty-fourth, I'm like, no, I can't do anything that day, but uh. You're okay? May I continue, please, um, and then for the December twenty-sixth county council meeting, a decision to counsel.
That if you look at our calendar from page five point eight on the previous agenda. Uh, there is no. December twenty-sixth county council meeting, we have one December tenth and then January fourteen. But so that.
It is on here, so I just want.
So the, on the counter that the uh December twenty-sixth meeting can be completely struck off of your record.
As, okay, wonderful, thank you, okay, thank you, Counselor Minz?
The uh one here, uh, November thirteenth, I got an Alice meeting in Barhead. And then if I could get confirmation, okay, what date is that? A S B meeting, is it?
Eighteenth of December, Wednesday.
December.
And the time?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty. Thank you. Counselor. Hey, Community Futures, November twentieth. That's all. Okay. Any?
November twenty-second Farm Women's Meeting at nine thirty.
Okay. Anybody else? Are we all good? So a motion to receive a calendars as, as amended? Counselor Minz?
Is it still called Farm Women's or is it Rural Women's Conference?
Okay, and a motion to. Receive, Counselor Minz? All those in favor? And opposed, nine and O. Thank you, Counselor Captain has made a motion to go into close. We will recess for ten minutes.